Noon, I'd like to call the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners Workshop for December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. We'll begin with invocation, I'll give the invocation, and Commissioner Turner will lead us in the pledge, so please stand if you're able. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this glorious day and all the wonders in it, Father God. We just thank you for the opportunity to gather here as commissioners and staff and concerned citizens, Father God. Just, we just praise the presenters today for the information that they're going to give us, Father God, and let us discuss it and deliberate it and make the best decisions for all the citizens of Putnam County. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner, and I will notice that the Mike and Mike to my right, they moved the flag on us again, so I did it a couple of weeks ago, so. Okay, so we will move down to public comment on agenda items. Is anybody wishing to make public comment on agenda items? Judith, I guess if you want to go ahead and come forward. And then Judith, we can wait till Drayton Island, if that's what you, that's what I would prefer, to be honest with you. If you can, can you wait? Okay. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, so we'll close the public comment portion of this meeting, and it is two oh five, so we'll open up, I'll recess the regular Board of County Commission workshop, and then convene the Port Authority workshop. Public comments, the first item. Any individuals wishing to make public comment on Port Authority items only? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. General discussion, commissioners, any general discussion or from staff?
I have something.
Commissioner Rawls?
So the, we've discussed it several times in the past, that the water system at the Barge Port, the building that I'm working on out there, we were looking to be able to tap and place a new eight-inch water line into the facility. The problem that's created is that there's a T and a valve, and basically, just not an opportunity for us to be able to bring a, tap in. We're going to have to replace the T at some point, it looks like, but I bring this up because it, it just kind of drives home the point that that system that's out there is really inadequate for what we're using it for, especially on the fire side of it. The backflow preventer that was replaced still impedes the performance of the fire system that was designed and would have to be designed for a building of that size. So what I'm saying is that, at some point, I think that we really, really, really should be looking at either giving that system back to the city or making an investment out there and fixing that system to where everybody that's tied onto that fire line is on their own backflow preventer, not depending on our black backflow preventer, and not having the opportunity for something. I mean, right now, there's zero room for error in the area that we're working in, everything is so tight, and if something does go wrong, we'll have to shut the water system down downstream, and it just seems like we can do something about that. But I don't know that it benefits us to be in that business right now, to be honest with you.
Okay. Any other comment? Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Mike, are y'all, Mike and Mike, are y'all familiar with what Commissioner Rawls is talking about?
I would have to defer to Mike Troxel on that one. He's been working with Jeff Rawls on that.
Yeah, Mike, Mike Troxel's out there. So what, what happens, the city came out and they put an eight-inch meter in. So you have a meter. Immediately adjacent to that is an eight-inch valve. Between that valve and the fire main, the fire backflow preventer is a T that heads back to the east and back, so it's a loop around, so the city can isolate their meter, work on it. But the point is, if somebody goes out right now and shuts down that backflow preventer that we own, you shut down all the hydrants from that, including the entire park is shut down. But the way it's supposed to be is each property owner should tap the water main, bring in their own backflow preventer, hook it to their fire sprinkler system. I know it's a burden on the businesses to, you know, come back years and years and years later and say, hey, this should have been, and it hasn't, but with part of the conversation we had today going forward, I think that we, we need to take a look at getting this, figure out what the solution is to getting it fixed before we start making any more advancements at the port.
Mr. Chairman, that's still, do we, the city of Palanca owns that pipe, you said, or do we?
They own the pipe up to, they own the eight-inch meter, from the eight-inch meter north is ours.
Okay.
So they metered the water and they sold, and this is another anomaly, and we actually had this conversation today when Mr. Troxel and Sam was out there. If somebody opens up a hydrant and flows water, we're paying for that, but we don't know who did that. And there's really no way to meter it because it's going through this big master meter, and the city apparently is billing us on the size of the meter, not on the actual consumption. And it just, it doesn't make sense to me that we're halfway, it's, you know, we're half in and half out. I just think we should be fully invested or not at all.
Okay. Mr. Troxel, do you have any comments on that?
Sorry about that, I was out in the hallway talking to somebody. Yeah, as far as, you know, what Mr. Rawls was saying, it is true, and once we get past that meter, it's all ours, but you know, if someone does flow a meter or flow a hydrant, unless we know about it, we will want to get a meter on the hydrant when they flow, but if we don't know they, they're doing it, then yeah, we're still eating the cost of that water.
Commissioner Turner?
You done, Commissioner Harvey?
I am, sir.
You know, we've talked about this multiple times in the last several months, and I'm tired of hearing about it. Let's find a solution. I understand what he's saying, let's just go out there and, and we can talk about it, talk about it, talk about it, but until somebody comes up with a recommendation or a solution or something, we're just burning daylight is all we're doing. So could we maybe take a look at it? I know he knows what he's talking about. I don't agree with him most of the time, but that doesn't mean he doesn't know what he's talking about every now and then, so. So anyhow, let's take, just, let's take a look at it. If we need to do something, if it's give it back to the city and they want it, great. If they don't want to give it back to, if we don't want to give it back to the city, then maybe we do need to do some of these changes to it. You know, we got infrastructure money coming at us shortly.
I hope.
It's my understanding that we can do this kind of stuff with, it's time to do it, especially if we can move at no cost into this program coming from the Fed shortly.
And, you know, just when I did talk with the city a little bit, you know, they, they did talk about, you know, if we, if we give it back to them, then they, they want to annex everything in the city, but that's, that was at that time, so I'm not sure if it's changed or not, but.
I'm not sure either, and it may be that we need to do something, but like I said, my point is though, if we'll go and design what needs to be done and make the recommendations, then when this pot of money comes down from the feds in not too distant future, I understand that's part of what we can do is infrastructure, water, things like that. Maybe we can go in there and fix all this. I'm not so sure we have the capacity out there either. That's something we need to kind of look at. You know, with the new development that's coming in the area and the stuff they're already using, I don't know how much water Green Dragon uses, I don't know how much water some of these other uses, so kind of need to look at that too, as far as capacity and future capacity.
True, because, you know, if we do keep it and we need to increase the capacity, that's, then we either have to put another water storage tank.
City would have to run a new water main.
Either a water main or we'd have to put a, a storage tank out there somewhere with the pump.
And I think the ultimate solution, and if we have the money, I don't know why we couldn't just go ahead and bite it off, would be to go in. You have, from the eight-inch pipe, you have a line that goes to a building for their fire system. What we're telling is just interrupt it, pull up a backflow. If we cover that cost, then we could take that, that backflow that was just put in, use it somewhere else, it definitely won't go bad, and then put a spool piece of pipe in, and we no longer have this problem. Everybody's responsible for their backflow preventers. Nobody can, and what's crazy is the.
I'm good with all that. My point, excuse me for now, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I'm good with all that. We've talked about it multiple times.
That's, that's the solution.
I don't even want to know how to build a watch, I just want a recommendation on how to make this.
I thought, I thought you asked what time it was. So no, seriously, that, that's the answer, is get us out of the backflow business and put it on the backs of the building owners, and the same thing with the domestic. But the domestics, it really is not that huge a deal.
Can you look at it? Mr. Troxel, you look at it?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, and I know we've replaced, and we told the, some of the business owners out there, well, you know, once we've replaced their old backflow, and it's now yours. You're responsible for it, you test it, you, if it goes bad, it's your responsibility. Now, not all of them have been replaced, there's still a couple of bad ones out there. Me and Mr. Willis drove, drove through the other day, there's, I think, two that we need to.
And we've kind of set a bad precedence too by doing all that, because if somebody next comes in there, they're going to expect a backflow preventer to be installed for them too.
I'd say we cut it off now, let, fix, fix what the damage has done to anybody in the future, supplies run, including Green Dragon.
How about we just make that decision when it comes time to make it after he looks at it, make the recommendation?
But you'll take a look at it, Mike, and get back with us? Okay. Right, that'll work. Okay, any more Port Authority discussion? Okay, we adjourned the Port Authority and reconvene the Board of County Commissioners Workshop, and we'll move down to Item A, Administration, Lee Connolly House Annual Support Review.
Yes, Sir Chairman, thank you. Commissioner Steph has heard numerous comments and criticism over the, or questioning over the Lee Connolly House support. So we're bringing today the item before you to bring the, to let you know what the facts or the history behind that support is, and to gain direction from the board. So the annual support for the Lee Connolly House, which was previously nine thousand six hundred and twelve dollars, was a line item that was removed during the two thousand and twenty-one budget year by a private budget officer who had just been through the state auditors and had been criticized for a lack of deliverables and/or contractual agreements that stated what the taxpayers' dollars were being used for, being used for. The current budget year that we're in, two thousand and twenty-two, followed that direction. If the commission wishes to reenact that annual support, then a transfer from the general fund reserves will be needed, and staff seeking direction.
Okay, commissioners, Commissioner Rawls?
I, I think this is a no-brainer. You know, they're, they're the only domestic violence shelter that we have in Putnam County. I think it's a service that needs to be provided, and I don't think that we're giving enough, to be honest with you, but getting to a contract should be simple. I just, you know, when Lori Siewer here the other day and told me she just found out that more that they were defunded, I was taken back. But I think that we should be supporting their efforts and doing what we can, whatever that is.
Commissioner Harvey?
You know, I sympathize with a lot of these organizations that have come before us recently, and I'm not saying something shouldn't be done, but without deliverables and without, I think that's what caused the previous budget director's heartburn, which it would, the audit clearly did show some, some issues. But again, it's taxpayer money, and I just wonder how far deep we're going to get in the weeds on funding every, every request that comes before us because this is something that's needed in our community, or is this done? I mean, I just supported them, they just came and got a whole truckload of canned goods and, and presents and stuff from me for the different things we had going on, but I'm not comfortable, I'm just not comfortable right now without an agreement and without knowing what even the deliverables would be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I was saving this until we started talking about ARPA funds again, but I'll go ahead and use it now, so y'all are probably going to have to hear it multiple times. It's my fundamental belief that the government, the government should not tax you and give your money to charity. That's my fundamental belief. I believe that's called socialism. I believe that we need to use our tax dollars to do things that makes our county better in the future for all citizens. So, that being said, if they can reach, because this is one we've done many years previously, if they can reach some kind of an agreement, I'll go along with you, Commissioner Harvey, and you, Commissioner Rawls, about nine thousand dollars for a yearly stipend to them or whatever, but it's still, where do you draw that line? It's like you said, Commissioner Harvey, where do you draw that line? Do you draw it on Epicure's eight hundred thousand? Do you draw it on the lady in Crescent City, and I really apologize for forgetting her name, but she's four hundred and something thousand dollars or started out there, I think she reduced it. Do you, do the feed the need that wants hundreds of thousands of dollars? Where do you draw this line at to where you try to use the money that you have for the, for the greater good of everybody involved instead of, for a very, a minor part of the economy? So, like I said, I have a real issue here with, with giving tax dollars to charities and nonprofits, especially if you don't have any kind of an agreement or any kind of a specific thing that you're going to use that money for. It's basically, it reminds me of, of somebody that came before us not too long ago and said, we don't really have a policy, we don't really have a mission statement or whatever, but if you give me that money, I'll do real good with it, I promise. You know, I'm sorry, I just can't get there. And they got good back work, they got good, you know, good ideas, but it's just, it's not there, so. I don't, I don't know that I can get there either. I'll go along with what the commission wants to do, but this makes it difficult when you can't even get a mission statement from them.
Commissioner Rawls?
Have they ever been asked, have they ever been offered or asked for a contract or an agreement?
It's my understanding, although I have no direct knowledge, that when the state audit, the criticism came out that there was some attempt to get information from them on deliverables, and it was unanswered, or the, the response was unanswered. Again, I was not involved in that directly, so I'm only going by notes left for me as we went through, went forward. I don't know if there would be an opportunity for deliverables, nor do I know what the board's expectations on deliverables would be.
So we, we work with the Swamis Development Center at UNF, they're a nonprofit, and they work under an MOU. You know, we're talking about the same type of thing, but at the end of the day, the five of us have, four of us here, the five of us in total, have a responsibility to provide public safety, and I don't know how you could take a domestic violence shelter out of the equation when you're looking at the totality of what public safety is. Because if, if a person is in jeopardy of violence and their family, and we don't do something to mitigate that or give them a place to be sheltered, then they're, they're now going to have to be taken out of county. So this is also, I think the burden falls on the Sheriff's Department at that point to be able to provide the services, but at some point, I think we just need to delineate what our responsibilities are, draw a line in the sand for everything else, and, and say, this is all we're responsible for, but you know, obviously hospitalization, fire, rescue, but this falls under public welfare, and that's one of our charges under the state constitution. You know, I've only been to one FAC meeting, and the attorney stood up there and said, if you want to know what your responsibilities are, it's in Florida Chapter one twenty-five point oh one, and it, and it says, this is our responsibility. Now, if, if we're, if we're talking about not having some words on a piece of paper like an MOU, I got it, but I, I think at that point, we should bring them in and say, hey, we, you know, can we get to that point? I don't know that, they, they may say, no, we're a secretive society, and we don't want anybody to know our business, or maybe they say, yes, we'll work with you any way we can. At one point, they had an office right here in our backyard, right here next to the old Eckerd Drugs, the old, what bank was that? He used to work here. Yeah, so, I, I, and, and we were giving them a place to stay. So I, I just, you know, it's counterintuitive that we don't support that type of effort especially. Thank you.
Commissioner Turner?
I think that it needs to be up clear, I have no issue with Lee Connolly House. I think they do wonderful work. I've seen them in action. I know what they do, I'm a fan. I'm telling you, this is about the concept. We've been asked by multiple agencies lately that do just as good a work as Lee Connolly House does, it has just as good of a vision that, that has, that does things too. So it's kind of, you know, this is nine thousand, okay, so we give nine thousand, we didn't give it to them last year, it's my understanding, so what do we do, like you said, we draw a line in the sand. Where do we draw it at? I don't know where the proper place is to draw it at. It's not, this isn't about Lee Connolly House and their mission statement or what they do, I think they're wonderful, and a very needed organization in the county. But so is all the others, well, not all of them, but dang near all, every single one of them that gave us a presentation. So where do we draw that line? Where do we start doing it? You know, maybe this is, maybe this particular request needs to be part of that conversation that we're having with all of them, with the feed the needs and the, the bread of life and the epicures and the different, all the different ones. Let this be part of that conversation, because everyone that I just mentioned, I'm telling you right now, they have a need, and they do good work for Putnam County. But that doesn't change my belief that I don't think that the government should tax you and then take your taxes and give it to nonprofit organizations. I don't believe that. So I think that's all, that's a Republican belief all the way back to Reagan. He used to preach that back when he was going through it all, is that you just don't do that. So anyhow, I don't know where we need to go with today. I don't know if this is critical funds for them, or they're going to close by Monday. I don't know. Did, I'm assuming, Julianne, they came to us and asked us for?
They did not. There's been multiple questions or comments from the board, and so staff is simply trying to inform the board of, of what actually happened and get direction.
Okay, well, this time, I'd like to group them in with all the others, especially if they haven't even made the request. And group them in with the others, and let's see where that ends up going when we get around to making that decision. That's my, my discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I think where this came from was when Lori Slaven was doing her presentation, something struck me where I asked her the question, how much money do you get from us every year? And she said, we've got ninety-six hundred dollars since two thousand and four, but oddly enough, I just found out today, we're not getting that funding anymore. And that was the, the first time that I heard that they weren't getting the funding, but I, I think where you, to answer your question, where we draw the line in the sand, is, as a commission, we need to delineate what we feel like our obligation to the public is. So if, if we have no obligation to the public to feed the hungry, to shelter the homeless, if we, if we don't want a dog in that fight, then I think we should put that out there and say, this is our position. Because these agencies that we're talking about, in my estimation, this is just my belief. I believe that we do have that responsibility morally, and when we raised our right hand, we swore to do this. So I think that we do have that responsibility to the public to be able to house folks that can otherwise take care of themselves, help the people that have mental issues, help people with substance abuse disorders. If we don't, and then we start, we start looking at the, at the public safety conversation where we have people that have substance abuse disorders, but we turn a blind eye to it. Or we have mental disorders and we turn a blind eye to it. You take a look at what's happening in other states around the nation right now, where the hands have been taken off on, on what used to be considered petty theft and petty crimes, and now it's getting worse and worse and worse. This is where government said, we're going to take, take, take our hands off and let the public deal with this. I, I think that if we, personally, I think it's wrong for us to take that approach, especially with the gorgeous ARPA money, and say, you know, and we're the government that has access to recurrent capital. Say that we're not going to put this money back out in the community because we don't want to make this large an investment, but these folks are out there doing what we're charged with the task of doing, and this is just my, my estimation. Y'all may say I'm dead wrong, maybe I'm reading too much into one twenty-five, maybe we can cut everybody off and not do anything. But I think at the end of the day, we have a moral and we have a contractual obligation with the folks that, that voted, voted us in and that told us what our job description was, which is one twenty-five oh one, and I think this falls under public safety and welfare. And I'm not saying welfare, and I agree with you, Commissioner Turner, I can't stand it when I see somebody out there begging for money, and you look at their shoes, they got a brand-new pair of shoes on, and you know that there is out there trying to panhandle for the reason, just for no reason at all, they have the ability to get a job. But there are some people that are actually truly needy, and if we don't address it, who's going to address it? But there are some people that are actually truly needy, and if we don't address it, who's gonna address it?
Mr. Portever George? Commissioner Turner?
I guess my point in the situation is, if I, if I as a citizen decide to pick a charity and give them money, how much I give them, what I do is my business. You decide to give money to a charity, that's your business, and whatever you wanna do, how much, how often, whatever, that's your business. The point that I'm making here, that, that I guess is getting by it, and I guess you and I are just gonna have to agree to disagree, is that I don't believe the government should tax you and take those tax dollars and then decide who gets the money. I don't think the five people that sit at this diocese should be taking tax dollars that could use, that could help all the citizens of Putnam County by doing certain things and, and lowering ta- future, uh, ta- local tax dollars, lo- doing things that's good for everybody in the county and spread it all over and giving it to a very minority of, of portion of the citizens. But even on top of that, even after that being said, the, it, I think the part that gets me the most is, who are we to think that we have the, the ability to decide who gets what? Who made us god over this stuff? The, the lack, the, us being elected didn't. So, but when we have the opportunity to take those found tax dollars, which is what I'm calling the ARPA money, found tax dollars, and use that for many thi- many good things for the future that's gonna help all the citizens of Putnam County and lower the tax base for the citizens or raise revenues if you decide to not lower your tax base because of it. You can do things that we've not been able to do for many, many years that's gonna benefit everybody. The communication system, you, that's gonna benefit every man, woman, and child in Putnam County because it's gonna make them safer, not just the people, but it's gonna make them safer because they have good communications for their first.
If I could, using that example, I don't need that communication system today, didn't need it yesterday. I may not need it hopefully for the next ten years of my life. But I don't mind paying for that as a taxpayer because I know it could benefit me one day. If Epicure, if Feed the Need, if Lee Conley House, if these other groups are out there, then I know that I don't have to personally worry about somebody having to sleep on the streets, go hungry, children having to be kept inside of a, a, a place where there might be, um, violence every day because they have nowhere to turn. It, and, and if we don't take care of them, then my tax dollars are gonna go to the Sheriff's Department or to another agency that will take them out of the home or take them out of the situation and house them and feed them, and I'm still paying for that out of my tax dollars, so.
I understand, and I think you and I could, uh, debate on this for many days to come, and we're not gonna change each other's minds knowing you and knowing me. And so, uh.
No, 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 I, I could be moved.
I guess my point is, is we have a different view of this situation, and I don't think we're gonna talk each other into it. It's just a matter of where it ends up going. But for today, this wasn't asked for by them. So, I say we put it off until we have the overall ARPA conversation because they're one of the ones that put in for ARPA money. They came and talked to us. So, let's talk to them along with the other people if we end up giving money to them. I haven't been convinced we're going there yet. Thank you, sir.
Well, I think that we, we do need to make that delineation, though, if, if, you know, the commission has an appetite to fund so- someone like Lee Conley House for ten thousand dollars a year, whatever it might be, um, that's a whole different conversation. You know, we, uh, you know, they're, I, I'm, I'm very passionate about where we are with our substance abuse and mental health. And what I realized, um, about a year ago was part of our problem is that our hospital is very derelict. But we're the ones that decide whether the hospital works or doesn't work in this community. But our hospital has, has said, "We don't wanna handle mental, mental health, there's no money in it. We don't wanna handle, um, uh, labor and delivery." So, we, we now have a need in our community because we're forcing anyone, uh, that, that has those issues to go out of county for the services because our, our hospital doesn't provide them, so.
I, I understand your side.
So, it's same, same with Lee Conley House. I don't wanna provide domestic violence sheltering for, for individuals personally. Um, but I, I, I think as a, as a commission, we, we owe it to the county to do that. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey, then we'll move forward. I feel we just need to discuss it when we get to the ARPA funds, if we're gonna use some of those funds, so.
Well, I think that's the conversation I wanna have real quick. I think going forward, and Julianne, what I'd like to see is what the notes from the auditor really was. Um, because I, I'm gonna say this, I've struggled with this ARPA funds back and forth. And I don't wanna give money away unless there's a deliverable attached to it. That one that we can defend against our statute. And, um, and that's just kinda how I feel right now, and I'm feeling more and more like that, so maybe if you.
In that item, I wrote verbatim the notes that were left for me, um, which basically stated taxpayer dollars were being utilized um, without contractual agreement specifying responsibilities of the contracting party and defining the services to be performed, parentheses, basis for the payments slash deliverables.
And you know, Julianne, I re- I'm, I remember back in the early, when I first got here, I think we were, we only were supporting, the county was only supporting two or three organizations. Wasn't like we were supporting a bunch of things.
Yeah.
And I don't even know why we were supporting those. I don't know if it was their turn in the barrel, or they made a great presentation, or someone was on the, I don't know that. But I, I don't ever wanna go back down that road without deliverables being attached that, that are measurable if we're go- going to spend any government money. And that, and I'll end with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, we, and if we do, we've got, the worst thing that could happen here, the worst thing that could happen is we start giving money to all the charities and nonprofits and then they, they determine through audit or something that it didn't work. And now, we got to write a second check, the check we gave them and the check to pay it back to the government for the funds they gave us. So.
Where does that come from?
Yeah, exactly. So, not only you're not gonna help, you're gonna double, but you're gonna dou- get a double, uh, hit on it. So, I think we've just got to be careful.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
You wanna just jump right into ARPA right now?
No, no. No.
I, 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 I think the deliverables, especially with regards to Lee Conley House, if, if they put, and this is a question, Julianne, if they put in, in a memorandum of understanding that they would, um, operate a domestic violence shelter that housed at least blank, um, individuals on a regular seven-day-a-week, twenty-four-hour-a-day basis, is that a deliverable?
I'm gonna defer to legal, that, that's a contractual question that you're asking.
If, if they said they will, they will operate a twenty-four-seven domestic violence shelter in county, is that a deliverable? Then they, and they, but they, they, they also said they'll, they'll offer services like, um, advocates for, for counseling, counselors and advocates. Uh, you know, there's a lot of things they do. And, you know, I, I think all of us are personally aware of what's going on. That was a very smart move, Mike. All, all aware of what, of what they're capable of doing, they're doing. So, you know, I, to me, this, it really seems mindless that we're having this conversation because if somebody at some point had gone in and said, "Hey, we need to get a memorandum of understanding, here's a template, um, that we can use," um, and, and give it to them, I don't, I don't know that they would say no. Maybe they would, maybe they say, "We, we don't, we don't want a memorandum of understanding." I don't know why they wouldn't, because this thing was started in Putnam County. Um, it originally started off in, in downtown Palaka by Lee Conley. And I don't know why we wouldn't.
I think three people, three of the commissioners have said they just wanna talk about it during ARPA or something.
But, well, this, this is, this is a different than ARPA conversation, honestly. This is a whole different, this is, this is recurrent, it'd be like if, if us may was standing here and they said, "We wanna continue working with you guys, you're a nonprofit."
Yeah, and I, and I think that'd interrupt. I think w- we are probably to a point that when we do discuss the ARPA, we've got all the, a lot of the nonprofits that, that do a lot of good in Putnam County. Lee Conley, one of them, they're all asking for money. So, whether we decide to give them any money or not, I think that'd be the time for us to, we're going to, to get a list. We're gonna support these three. This is why, this is what we're gonna get back from them as a report, deliverable. So, I think that needs to be a conversation for another day, but at least it's out there, um, that we discussed it and we have been giving them money. We just, we cut it off because of the audit and, and not having what they felt we needed to give them to satisfy, justify, and giving away taxpayers' money, so. Okay, so we'll move on to item B, true trust economic grant settlement.
This is a no-brainer, this is a no-brainer to me, Mr. Chairman, we owe them the money. It's just, we didn't just need to cut them a check. What do you need, a motion?
If you'll just give me consensus, 'cause it's gotta come back to the board with the general fund reserve, uh, transfer.
We owe them the money, it's been proven.
Yeah, there's a conversation with Julianne yesterday, it kinda looked like a deal's a deal, and they came through, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
And I wanna say, um, I'm glad we were able to make that deal. We kept a business in Putnam County. And by all looks, they've grown their business and profited from it, so it's a good move for Putnam County. Thank you.
Yeah, they, they definitely, um, I don't, I think, I don't, I think they're running two shifts again, and, uh, they're pumping out about ten houses a day out of that facility down there.
They're so busy, they can't take out any new clients.
Right.
Well, in all fairness, it doesn't matter if they make trust as widgets or doorknobs. It doesn't matter, the deal was made, that if they do it, then they get the money, they did the deal, we need to pay them the money.
And it's like thirty or forty grand, it's not.
Right, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're good on that one?
Well, I, I have a question. Was this just a, uh, because I asked the lady when I called her, I said, "Was there a mistake made where someone just forgot about it? Why are y'all now coming up this late in the game?" And she, she had sent me the history going back and forth, but, um, I agree, we just need to get this thing off and get them funded for a little bit of this.
Okay. All right, we'll move down to item C, county fee schedule amendments.
Yes, sir, Chairman. Um, we bring this to you annually, annually. Um, as you'll see in your packet, there are a few divisions that are requesting a nominal increase in fees. Uh, that includes Parks and Recreation, who brought their suggested fees to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, where they received unanimous consent, um, in agreement with the fees recommended, as well as the Department of Health and Emergency Services. Um, Fire EMS tran- uh, Treatment Fee Schedule, uh, it better aligns with the average rates in neighboring counties and to increase, um, for the allowable reimbursable Medicare expense that's gonna increase in January.
Okay, we got a proper motion to move approval of the county fee schedule amendments, we got a proper second.
I, I.
Any discussion?
Under discussion. I will say that I, I think that, I think we could've charged more for our Parks and Recreation fees, especially when we have out of, out of county people coming in here. Um, you know, I went to watch one of my granddaughter's softball games not too long ago and had to pay a parking fee. Uh, but we're not getting much for this, for the facility at all, and I, I just, I think that's a conversation that needs to be had at a different date. But it seems to me like we're, we're taking a taxpayer-funded asset, giving it to a private for-profit group or individual so they can profit off of it, take the money right out of our county. And the folks that live here that wanna participate in that or watch are, are getting stuck with the bill literally. That's just my ten cents worth.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
So, basically, what we're saying is, is that, um, and the reason I made this motion so easily was I knew this discussion was gonna take place. I think they should charge less. Commissioner Rawls, I knew before this meeting would, would wanna charge more. And so, I just made the thing to try to move it on down the road because what they are charging is reasonable. Um, so, that's, I just wanted to say that. I knew this was, was gonna be the conversation, which is why I just went on and made the motion.
Okay. Kevin, do you wanna make any comments? I know with the Rec Advisory Board, we'd look into that, and I know we looked at what.
Were you wanting to start a fight?
No, neighboring, neighboring county, I just want clarification. Neighboring counties were charging, and we needed to go with some fees. I just wanna make everybody understand that in the fee schedule, it does have the discount for multiple children in a particular family, uh, in there. Okay? Yeah, it, it is, it is, it is.
Y- yes, sir, they're, they're acceptable fees. Uh, trying to balance that, uh, ability to draw people in, to have tournaments and to have events versus charging too much to dissuade them from coming. It, it's kind of one of those deals where we're trying to get our name out there amongst tournament directors and against sports program, uh, directors so that they realize that we have the facilities and we have the ability to host their events. And then as they continue to come, uh, you know, we can continue to look at the fees every year. Uh, so, this year, we're looking at, uh, almost a monthly, uh, possible softball tournament, uh, held here on the county. Um, and so, again, you know, we may come back next year and revisit this. Um, but the, you know, the deposit fee has gone up to accommodate some of those situations where, uh, people have come in and then the, the previous deposit was so low, they just took off and left, and we kept their deposit, which was nowhere near, uh, enough to make up for the, the, the left-behind litter and stuff. Now, we've increased that to where, uh, when someone has a, an event at one of our parks or one of our sports fields, uh, the deposit should hopefully dissuade them from doing that. So, that's kinda what this is.
You understand, you don't have to sell us the motion on the floor, you get it.
I just want the explanation, okay.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Harvey?
You know, um, yeah, um, I would've liked these fees not to raise at all, frankly. And, but I would also like some documentation to show what, what you're talking about. When someone rents a field or something, what is our cost of doing business there? And maybe we're not charging the softball tournament director enough money. I don't know that answer. But I don't want, but I do have a question. When we talk about football, soccer, field rental slash park, is that every park we got? 'Cause you know where I'm going with this. So, now, we just raised Melrose from a hundred dollars to two hundred dollars.
Five hundred.
Five hundred dollars.
That's 'cause they were in your district.
The, the deposit, simply, simply the deposit is the five hundred dollar fee, that, that's, they will get that money back once the.
That's under tournament fees. Under park rental, it says two hundred dollars.
It, it should all be kind of consolidated. It's a formatting issue. The, the, the sports field like a.
So, you're gonna charge them five hundred dollar deposit and then two hundred dollars for an event to be done in the park?
Yes, sir.
And that's every park that we own?
Yes, sir.
Including?
Every park.
East Palaka, San Mateo, Walaka, every park?
Every park, yes.
We don't have any.
But they get the deposit back as long as the field is taken care of, so it's, it's a wash to them. The only thing they're really paying is the rental fee as long as they take care of the property.
I don't like it, but I'm gonna have to go with it, but I really would like some supporting document showing the need to raise.
Do you wanna adjust it and talk about it later and then maybe we'll draw my motion? I'd be happy to do it for you if that's what you want.
I trust, I trust our staff enough to know that there's a need there, I just don't.
He's had some.
It's, it's as simple as.
Where, where the deposit was so low, and they have the event and they trashed the place. Just recently, when they had, they, everybody was out there, you know, I think even the Sheriff's Department went out and helped them clean it up because somebody was coming to do some type of, oh, it was showcasing some athletes, right?
Authorized use, though, right? We didn't know that was gonna happen.
But, but they've done it during softball tournaments also. Um, a- and to, uh, elaborate on your, your question about the fees, herbicides have gone up, pesticides have gone up, fertilizers have gone up, all those associated fees that it comes to taking care of a field. Uh, fuel prices have gone up. So, all of those costs have continued to increase over the years, and we haven't necessarily increased our fees to accommodate that.
I think as we go along, if I'm made this chairman, I think as we go along, that if there's a certain type of event that this is really hurting, that Kevin can come back and try to get some exclusions. If this, in other words, if this is Pee-wee football and they just can't come up with five hundred dollars to make this work in using the field that day, then maybe we need to make that ex- I'm just, I don't know, maybe, maybe make that exclusion. But, you know, if somebody wants to bring in a, a nineteen-ball tournament to this town and they can't put up five hundred dollars to keep some trash in the field, I want them here as bad as anybody, but not that bad.
Well, most of those get TDC money, so they come before the TDC and request that money. But I'm, I'm just talking about your, uh, see, Kevin, I didn't grow up in that park environment. I grew up in Francis, there was a field down the road, and you put paper plates with a rock on it, and that's what you did.
Yes, sir.
We didn't, um, there was nobody ever cut the grass unless a neighbor cut the grass. I mean, it just wasn't. But I think that for, and I'm gonna say it, for Melrose, that's a heavy lift right there. That's because there's a warring fashion out there anyway. And I'm not, you're standing from the microphone, I don't mean to pick on you, that's, but it's just, I don't know. I don't know the answer there.
Well, no matter what we did, it wouldn't be perfect.
No.
We couldn't tweak it.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
All right. Take us through, uh, a, uh, someone that wants to rent Triangle Park, Lauren Carter wrote, for a Saturday, Sunday tournament.
Uh, like a softball tournament?
Mm-hmm.
They come into the office, they fill out the reservation form that we have, telling us how many fields they want and everything. They pay us a five hundred dollar deposit.
Right.
They come in, do the event. Um, depending on how many teams they have, we require them to provide their own porta potty uh, and at their own, uh, roll-off dumpster, um, for that specific event. And then, uh, when the total number of teams have been determined, usually on a Saturday or sometime, we communicate, uh, they leave us that amount of money, a, a fee, that, that, the actual fee for the, the event.
Go ahead, say, say they have fifteen teams.
Uh, well, it doesn't matter about the teams, it's the number of fields. If they're gonna use all four fields, it's a hundred dollars per field, per day.
Right.
And so, if they're gonna do Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, three hundred dollars per field times four. And then if they're gonna use the lights at night. And then if they're going to use the lights at night, fifteen dollars per hour per field. And then on Monday, when we come in, we check the field and inspect the fields and everything. If they took the trash out, if they took care of everything, we mail them back their five hundred dollar deposit and we keep the actual usage fee.
So the, my concern is, you're not charging enough, again, and you have a for-profit company coming in using a public facility to make money. You just said yourself, your cost of fuel, your equipment, your vehicles, your employees aren't paid enough, that's a problem. But you guys aren't charging enough to be able to cover those extra costs. And then, but they get to come here and use our facility and profit greatly. Have you ever sat down and taken a look at what a tournament promoter charges, the teams to play? What do you think that promoter is getting when you wash all of your charges out of what he, how he or she gets?
Depending on the number of teams, he could walk away with a couple thousand dollars.
Correct.
But, but that's after he's had to pay for the porta potty rentals and all the other things that we require, the trophies, medals, whatever he provides to the winners of the event and then any others specials. But that's on him, that, that.
You, you said a couple thousand dollars. Is that, is that a low number or is that an average number?
Honestly, I, I don't know, it just depends on how many teams he has to compete. The number of teams is what drives.
We've had tournaments this year.
What's that?
We've had tournaments this year.
Yes, this past year.
So maybe you could sit, sit down in the next week or so, if you get a chance, and pull out the last three tournaments and let me know what we've gotten from that. Because I can tell you, I had an electrician go and give me a price on what it would cost to replace all the light heads on the poles with LED lights. We don't have money for that in our budget, but we need to, we need to get the money for it. I get complaints from our public that you're locking up facilities, bathrooms especially, because we don't have anybody to supervise them, but the public can't, can't use those fields. And yet somebody comes in and runs a tournament and all of a sudden the field's of use. So we're, it, it's like we want to pat ourselves on the back and say that we're putting, we're providing parks and recreational services to our public, but at the same time, the same public is complaining to us that they don't have access to those parks and recreational services because they're locked out. And then you're going to say, well, it's because we don't have the manpower or the, the staff to be able to go out and manage them, and I agree. So it, it, we, we, we can't have it both ways. We can't say, we're going to give you an anemic budget and then tell you that you can't, that you're, you're charging too much money and you shouldn't be charging deposits. So I, I personally would think that we'd be able to recoup more money than that. You know, when somebody comes in the county and builds a house, they pay a handsome fee to the building department for the, the inspection services. It doesn't cost an inspector thirty bucks to walk on a job and look around for ten minutes and wa, and drive off.
All right, Jeff, we're not, we're not, we'll have, we, I'll bring that up at the next Park and Rec, Recreation Advisory Meeting about those. And if you could, get some figures to bring back to us, if you would.
Sure.
Okay, all right, I'm going to call the question, we have a proper motion, a proper second. All in favor, and okay, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, or that passes. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, we'll move down to D, Public Works, Fort Gates Ferry Discussion.
Good afternoon, this is the Fort Gates Ferry. This has to do with a submerged land lease versus a easement. And I don't know if you guys got a chance to read through the documents, but we currently have a management agreement or we had a management agreement expired in November. The DEP no longer does management agreements, they had to do submerged land leases. And so when we started designing for the new landing years ago, you know, when we got the state money or whatever to do that, they required a, a new submerged land lease because the docks were going to be longer and some other stuff. So what we wanted to do is, if we, when they were going through the submerged land lease process, there are several structures down here at, at Fort Gates Ferry that they wanted to include in that, in that submerged land lease. There's a boat dock and, and I think there was three specific ones out there, boat dock and a pier or something. But the county didn't build those and so we didn't want to take them in and just submerged land lease. However, we believe that we currently have an easement with the state to, to operate the ferry and, and go down the road. So we believe that's all we need at this time to make this happen. But we wanted to bring this to the board for discussion with everybody, especially after they've seen some of the, the documents here. What we want to do is go forward without, without pursuing a submerged land lease because that would be going more, more dollars, that we have to, that we'd have to get a consultant involved with, with trying to get this submerged land lease.
Where are we at on Fort Gates Ferry at the present time? Is, is the barge operating?
No, the, the landing is in, the landing is done. When I say the landing, it's the wood portion. There, there's the metal, the metal drop-down gate, I'm getting prices for that currently. I'm, I'm just waiting on, on one more so that we can get that piece done.
The gentleman?
I talked to, just to interrupt you, I talked to Travis just a couple days ago and he said that the barge is ready to go, they're still working on.
On the boat.
The old pushboat, but I think that if we get the metal ramp part done, I think will be completed. I think there'll be some stuff on the other side and if he's done this minor, then I think he could operate again with another pushboat. He can just use a, I think he said that somebody was going to donate a pushboat for them to use until they got the whole one fixed. So, but the barge is ready.
Okay, but we're still not operational in our contractual agreement with the person that's, what's his name, the gentleman?
Drackett.
Hackett?
Yeah.
Drackett?
No, Dick Hackett.
Hackett?
Dick Hackett and Dale Jones.
Okay. Well, we'd name him whatever we want to, but I think of what I was thinking about was Mr. Hackett. Yeah, the older gentleman that's been doing it for quite some time.
Right.
The Jones, I think, is, is the fellow that's in operational business with him.
Yeah, his partner.
His partner, yes, okay, so. Right now, we've been paying this fella for four years now that he hasn't been operating the thing. Is our contract done with him? So we had, how many year the contract do we have? A ninety-nine year contract that we pay him or what? Our contract's not over with him yet?
Commissioner Turner, I can pull the details, I don't have them off the top of my head, I think it was a long-term contract.
I understand that, which is why we've been paying him for the last four years, even though he hadn't been operating the thing. Because, but the landings weren't ready and that was our portion of it, so it was like a dual, a dual thing here. So if we get the landings ready and he can't go crank this barge up because his boat's bad or his barge is bad or because he just don't feel like doing it that day because he can, you know, we, I'm not trying to be facetious with that comment. I'm just saying, how long are we going to keep paying this guy to not operate the ferry?
At, my understanding from the contract, contract is that at the point at which the landings are operational, if he fails to provide the service, then the contract is breached.
Okay.
Mike, didn't you say it was, what, what happens in twenty twenty-four?
I believe the agreement is up to twenty twenty-four.
With, with them, with Dick Hackett now, it's twenty twenty-four when it actually expires.
Unless they just don't go run the barge and then we don't have to pay them no more. Once we get our landings ready, then they have to go make a barge operate. If they don't make a barge operate, then our deals are pretty much done, we think. All right, so what are we actually needing from us today? We don't want any more liabilities there, Mike.
That's what I'll say, I, I don't want anything else. I think we, now, in respect to what them operating their businesses, I don't know how that affects them. We probably need to be aware of that, but I don't think we need anything as far as a county other than road down there, the landing, and on the other side, that's it. And that's all we need to be responsible for, no boathouses, nothing else, no dock, fish and pier, nothing.
Now, that's, from, from everything I can read and we've read through here, that's all we need. And there is a current easement that we have that, that accommodates that.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So basically DEP wants us to accept more liability that we're not wanting to do. What if we say no, what are they going to, are they given any, I mean, are they?
Then they probably wouldn't go for the submerged land lease, but that was.
Do we have to have the submerged land lease to, to be able to run the ferry back and forth?
Even under an easement, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't think so, because we have a current easement there. Even if, because we're not, we're not changing anything on the structures, we're not changing anything out there.
Okay, I guess my question is, right now, we only have the submerged land lease basically on what we were using, not the boat, I mean, not the public area, not anything else. And DEP decides they want us to see if we're willing to take all that over.
Well, we had a, we had a, we had a management agreement, which they no longer do. They don't do those anymore, they do submerged land leases. And that management agreement did run out in November. But there is a, again, there's a current easement that they gave us for the road and the ferry, I believe. Now, for the, for the landing, so that's.
I don't want to take on any more. I've had one call since that ferry's been down and I don't mean that, I'm sure there's other people that might have gotten more, but I've gotten one and it wasn't even from my district. And, and I appreciate the ferry running across, don't get me wrong, it probably saved me some time the other day coming to that. But, you know, it's just, how much more? This thing has been a, a boondoggle and I don't mean that, even if we could have ran the ferry, remember the forestry service wouldn't even open up the roads and clean up the road. You couldn't have got people up to nineteen over there. So it's, it just concerns me about that, it really does, without the forestry department and.
Yeah, there's already so many facets to this project that if you keep adding them to it and DEP now is saying that if we don't take on additional liability and expense and they're not willing to let us have what we need, you know, at some point in here, you just got to walk away.
Right. Yeah, because they, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike and Mike, but when we, when we were going forward with the submerged land lease because of, of the new concrete landings that were going to be put in, they said we, we needed to attach these structures to it and they're not, they're not our structures.
And again, that's, that's when the new, the two new structures were introduced. One's like a, a, a boathouse that houses multiple vessels and another, I believe, is like a pedestrian dock. And i, in the process of going through the revised or the new submerged lands lease associated with the new concrete structures that we were going to build, because they went outside the original footprint of the existing landing, they tried to push those other two structures off onto us, take ownership of them. So essentially, if we were to take those in, we would be responsible for maintaining them, all, all those things of that nature as well. So that's where our reluctance comes from. My opinion is, we are really doing a maintenance project, we are not stepping outside of the original footprint of the existing ferry landing. So I feel we should be able to vacate, you know, the application for the submerged lands lease. But again, that's something we'd have deferred legal to, you know, elaborate the details of further.
Commissioner Rawls?
So when you and I met down there, when you first got here, the boathouse you talked about, your face was one to the left.
Correct.
The, the little building that was, we were there discussing at the time. And there was talk then about that was part of that lease as well, is that ours or is that theirs?
I can't find it anywhere in, in, in the, in the, in the agreement that we have.
So that has nothing in the conversation. Nimitz, if the people that are operating that fish camp, can they sign the land lease and maintain that dock themselves? Does it have to be the government?
We have not explored that, that option with DEP. We, we could look into that and see if that's something they'd be willing to.
And the next question is, that is independent of the ferry landing. What does one have to do with the other?
They're trying to find a willing scapegoat is what they're trying to.
Sure.
Right. Are there, I mean.
And I'm sorry, I thought it was part of.
No, it's, no, it's completely separate, physically.
No, I, I thought that was part of what DEP had the land lease for, was part of the landing.
The, the landing, not the boathouse?
Yeah, that's been an, an existing boathouse for a long time, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure they run out spaces.
Who owns it?
I would think.
I don't know. But they want us to maintain it or be responsible for it?
When we were going through the submerged land lease with the, with the new, with the new structures down there, they wanted us to pick it up in, in the submerged land leases as county-owned property and it's, we don't own it.
How about if you reach out to them and say, we, we'll, we're going to keep what we've got and what's the repercussions of not pursuing the submerged land lease and what does the owner have to do? You know, you want to, you know, we got to think of him, I mean, he's been down there trying to operate this thing and so we don't need to kick him to the curb. But I don't, I don't want any more responsibility as a commissioner, as a commission for this.
I think they're operating those docks, I think they leased them out.
I think they leased them out now, I think they really do.
People that live, there's those little cabins and trailers and stuff there.
And they're not going, I mean, it's not part of our, our easement or whatever that we currently had, it was not part of that. So I don't know how, how they're doing it or how they got built or.
Maybe we could just send a letter to DEP and tell them they got their, tell them, return to sender the wrong, wrong address.
Or just don't say anything else at all until they come and start knocking on our door.
Yeah, I don't see how they would just try to hand us a dock.
We've got, if we've got an easement that allows us to operate the ferry, once it gets started in the story, you want to come shut it down. DEP comes in and shuts it down.
It allows him to operate the ferry. We don't operate the ferry. We don't provide the barges, we provide the landing.
We provide the landing.
Landing.
The easement provide, gives us.
We don't operate the barge.
Need for a land, or gives us the right to have a landing.
But nothing, correct me if I'm wrong, Nimitz, nothing has changed, Mike, Nimitz, nothing has changed, right? The, the, the landing has been in a state of, of repair for four plus years. Nothing has changed, correct?
Yes, we're within the original footprint for all respective, respective purposes, this is a maintenance type of project.
Why are we here now?
Because they want us to have an agreement, they had a management plan that, that expired in November and they want us to do something better and this board's not willing to do anything.
But the management plan never included those docks.
It didn't include those docks.
It was the property to the right of the, from what I remember.
Correct.
And then when we were going.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're, I think if you're, what you said is absolutely correct. If you'll give Mike and I a chance to reach back out to him, let us talk to him about what it is that we don't think we need to be taking any type of ownership over and, and move forward and come back with a, with the necessary information, I think you're absolutely right.
I'll take the docks personally if they want to give them to me.
And then have the conversation that Dick, that the Hacketts and Dale Jones need to be, what happens to those things? Because they're, they're there, they're operating them, so.
That's their business though.
And maybe they have to do the submerged lands lease. I, I know a friend that has a marina, he does a submerged land lease at his business that he operates. Not he owns the property and everything, this is just a, an agreement that goes back to Abraham Lincoln, you know?
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll. Yes, sir, we'll, we'll get right on that for you.
Three years before him.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, all right, you're going to look into that? Okay, so we'll move down to the next one, which would be item E, Drayton Island Ferry Operator Award Discussion.
This one was, was, was bid out a while ago and what we, what we did, there was only one qualified bidder came back. And her current contract ends December fifteenth, but what we did is, this is very, again, very convoluted. We're trying to make this right as we go along. The county owns the barge, the, the current ferry operator owns the pushboat or the, or the boat that, that hauls them back and forth. So the bit, we had them bid it as a cost, then plus if we needed to break out the insurance, what the insurance would be for them. So her original cost was, was it thirty-two, five plus twelve-five for insurance or whatever that was. There was only one, only one bidder, so I talked with, I talked with Karen, the operator, and she, she's willing to go to thirty thousand dollars a year, which is a slight increase over what she's currently doing, if we keep the insurance the way we pay it the same, which is kind of one, one large policy for, for both the barge and the boat and the crew to go forward for this next year. So what I want to do is to discuss this with you guys, say, hey, I think this is the best deal for now. I, I do want to look at other options, but for, for right now, I believe the thirty grand per, for twelve months for her services and then the county pays the, the insurance on both the barge and the boat. Because you, you, we get a better deal if we, if we do that.
It's a one-year term.
Just a one-year term.
Commissioner Harvey?
But we don't own the boat.
We do not own the boat.
So we can't ensure, we don't have an insurable interest in something we don't own.
The Drayton Island boat's ours, isn't it?
So we, we have.
Barge is ours.
The barge we own, but the boat we don't. Now, we can make an agreement with her to pay her the cost of her boat insurance, but we don't have an insurable interest in that boat. So, but I'm not opposed to doing what you're saying because truly I've been looking around and this is not an easy solution for a county whatsoever. And trust me, even through our own insurance trust. And trust me, even through our own insurance trust, we got people scratching their heads and kicking the door. Cause they can't figure it out either. So, but we can't insure the boat. So you got to figure whatever Karen's going to cost for that, but we don't have an insurable interest on that boat.
Not the barge, but the push boat.
Right. We do the barge, but not the push boat.
We, we have been insuring the boat, uh, and.
You can insure my house, but you don't have an insurable interest in my house. So you'll not be able to collect anything on it because you can't prove you own it. So I agree with you in theory, but at the same time, it, we shouldn't be paying for something we don't have an insurable interest in. Now, we can pay Karen separately for the cost of the boat insurance.
There's some caveat in the insurance and she can't, um, insure the boat with the barge. And it's unfortunate Barbara's not here, but there's a caveat to the insurance that, um, she can't do that unless she goes out and gets the policy for which she put inside the bid, which is double or triple the amount of money that we can insure.
All right, insure the boat we don't own. I'm fine with it. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Rawls?
You know, it's, it's no secret that I am just opposed to us being in this business anyways. To Commissioner Turner's point, this is a minority group of owners who decided to move on to an island. Now they want public transportation to be provided, but it says, it says in the contract that they will provide an insurable source of power. Um, but it doesn't say who's liable at that point. And it just seems to me like if we're the ones providing the insurance, if, if there is a loss, how are we not on the hook as, uh, as a government?
And it says they'll have a whole harmless agreement, but I mean. Yeah, you're on the hook for everything.
Cause it's, it's considered our, our service?
Okay, Mike, so your recommendation is to approve this and it'd be thirty thousand plus the insurance, which is about six?
It's, well, it's a little bit more than that. It's, uh, about fifteen total, uh, a year. That's for both the, the barge and the boat and the crew. And they share a one million dollar, uh, pollution liability. Now, if you were to break that out, then it would have to be one million dollars separately. Uh, so that's, that's why it's, it's cheaper if we insure them both together. Uh. Does that make sense?
Can she insure our barge any more than we can insure her boat?
We're, we're doing it. We're buying the insurance. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take, uh, staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a question.
Discussion.
Okay, we got a proper motion and a proper second and then the discussion. Um, I'll start with Commissioner Turner.
I think that the biggest difference here is, I have a real aversion to Fort Gates Ferry. I really do, because it's like the bridge to nowhere, because either.
Fort Gates, are you dreaming?
Fort Gates is like the bridge to nowhere. I still contend that if you sit on either side of there and once it gets operational, you sit on either side of there and you blow your horn and wait on them to come get you. And I'll drive around and be waiting for you on the other side. Now, I'll spend a few more dollars in gas, but I'll be there waiting on you. So it's not a time saver in most instances. Might have been back in the horse and buggy day, but it's not now. And I think the key difference between that and Drayton Island is, is Drayton Island, that's just like the bridge to their home. DOT classifies it as a bridge. DOT gave the money to put the landings in. We, we do, we do have an obligation for part of that road on Drayton Island unless something's changed. Since I was there last, they, it's class B roads that goes up through there. So we have obligations. It's not private roads. Once you cross Drayton Island, it's county maintained roads on the other side. Is that, isn't that correct, Commissioner Pickens, or no, on Drayton Island?
The one main road is county maintained road.
That one road that goes out and goes through the, the island. I thought it was a county maintained road. So we do have some obligations on the other side. With us having those obligations, I think that also gives us the obligation to have some kind of ferry service to get our equipment over there to complete our obligations. Unless we're going to fly it in there with a big helicopter and drop it on the island or something. Or get something else, some other kind of deal going on. So I think there's a difference between Drayton Island and Fort Gates. And I don't, I've, I've fought this for four years. I think that's the biggest difference. The people on the island do pay taxes, probably not enough to cover the cost of the ferry. But they pay a, a ride stipend to go in there. And if they want to go when the ferry's not normally going, they have to go make a deal with, with Captain Karen on the side to get her to come get them or what have you. I believe that's the way it works down there. So, you know, it doesn't sit well with me either. I just think on Drayton Island, we, we're going to have to fund it at least for now. I don't see an option.
Yeah, I think you're correct. Commissioner Rawls?
We're putting a, a bridge in in Barton. We're not providing the cars for the people that live in Barton to drive across the bridge. I don't, Mike Nimitz. Two years ago, his predecessor sat over there in this little room and you guys convinced the commission that we did not own that road. That only a very small portion of it, at the very end of the ferry, when you come off the ferry, um, onto the island, belongs to the county. Everything else belongs to taxpayers.
Fixing up that Fort Gates, at the end of Fort Gates, we only owe a small, own a small landing.
This was, the, the discussion evolved around the, the, somebody came in, they were upset. Clay Electric had gone out there, their trucks tore the roads up. And we argued emphatically there were not our roads, that Clay Electric did that on their own and that they were responsible. At one point, um, there was a conversation about just going ahead and digging the dirt, literally out of an empty lot and fixing the road. And that was, that was going to be the solution. We do not own the road up the middle of that island. That was, that was what I was convinced of at the time.
But what happened was, I think you're correct on that part, that we only own a certain part. But because the county had been maintaining that road for a number of years, um, how do you do it? By prescribed rights or something like that? So, so Stacy Manning sat right over there and told us that that was not our road. And I went out there and talked to those people and said it was not our road. And, and they were very nice, but a lawyer talking to a lawyer, things changed. And he changed his tune. So we did a maintenance map and we took that road in to the county maintenance program. I know I'm right on that. So it's our road to maintain.
There were a, a large group of roads taken in the nineteen sixties. And one of those roads was that road on Drayton Island. So there was some ambiguity on whether or not we really owned it and to what extent, because the way it was brought into ownership was questionable. But at the end of it, after being reviewed by legal at that time, was determined that since we had done maintenance and had accepted the road in the nineteen sixties, we, we pretty much owned it. So that's, that's where it went to the maintenance map and the other, uh, activities that led to full ownership by the county.
I, I can tell you, as long as I've been here, we've never taken a road into the public work system. This was argued by staff that we didn't own it, that the repairs in the roads were not our, our responsibility. Um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't take long to go back and, and look at the, um, recorded, listen to the recordings of the meetings because we didn't have that many meetings when Tompkins was here.
It cost about fifteen thousand dollars to do the, the maintenance map. You remember that, Mike?
Yes, sir.
You remember that? We had to do that? Yeah, it was about fifteen grand. So.
But we, we do not own the road. The land that the road sits on is not ours, is it?
It, it, it is ours. It was deeded over to the county in the nineteen sixties with.
And, and they were, and, and we accepted the deeds?
That's what, that's what the records, I believe, indicated. There was this ambiguity on, on how the whole process was done back then. And again, it was, again, Press Tompkins' position on the matter was, you know, we may or may not actually own it. And legal reviewed it and the ultimate determination was that it is ours because we had done maintenance, among other things. And that's how it was brought into the system.
I keep getting these confused over the years when we talk about them, Drayton Island and, and, uh, Fort Gates. One of them, the landing didn't actually go on to the, where the road was supposed to be. Was that Drayton Island or was that?
Yes, sir, that's that one as well, on the Drayton Island side.
We decided, or we, some legal genius decided that, that we were going to, that we owned it because we, under prescriptive easement, because we maintained it all the years from the actual landing to the end of the road in there that we owned, even though the, the road was, the, uh, landing wasn't at the end of the road, which is where it was supposed to be. So all that hadn't changed, has it? I mean, that's all basically where it was last year and the year before when we talked about this and four years ago when we started talking about this. So basically, we either continue this another year. I think we need to continue it another year, like the motion states that we have on the floor. And then we need to start talking about what do we do next?
I think we should be looking at MSBU.
Cause for the last three years, we've been saying, at some point, these individuals need to pay a larger pay, piece of this through a MSBU for water service over to their property. Uh, and then if they decide they don't want to do that, at least they had the opportunity, you know, to, uh, start an MSBU, uh, for that purpose. So I think we need to go ahead and fund it, in my personal opinion.
I'll, I'll, I'll vote for the next twelve months, but I think we really do need to consider an MSBU. Um, we, we do it to everybody else for the roads they live on. We, I mean, think of the, the, of the other seventy-three thousand people that live here that, or the, the ones that live on really substandard roads that are our roads that we own, but don't have the money to, to bring up. So I, I would say, yeah, let's give them twelve more months, put them on notice that in twelve months. We're talking an average, probably an average of about eighty bucks per month per household. Um, and otherwise, let them get a contract with the operator. And then when we, how often, when was the last time our staff had to go over there to do road, road maintenance?
It's been a little over a year since we've been over there.
We'll, we'll, we'll pay, we own the barge, let them use it, let them get an operator, and then we'll pay the operator every now and then if we have to. But I'll, I'll vote in favor of this toll contract.
Well, what will, what will happen is the, the landings themselves are both being completely rebuilt. They're going to be slightly relocated and I think DOT purchased property on both sides to relocate those, okay? So the property, I don't think it'd be ours or DOT's, but the bridge, they will be repaired, brand new. And the boat ramp on the mainland side will be new, still no parking. Um, so that is taking care of the weight, one of the weight limit problems because the barge probably would hold more than what you could take across the wooden ferry landings, right? So that's taken care of. We had increased the, the capacity of the barge weight when we purchased a new one. So that's going to take care of all the issues of getting stuff back and forth, other than the size of the push boat, which will probably have to be addressed in a year, um, when you take larger things over there when all this is done. But some issues that needed to be taken care of are finally going to be taken care of within twelve months. And then I think it probably is time to have the discussion with, um, with the city, the, the property owners over there. And they may be able to get a better service from hiring Karen directly rather than having the county, you know? Cause they're only a few hours on Monday and a few hours on Friday. That's all they're getting and they're still have, they're having to pay also. So that's all I have to say. Now, the vote, now Karen, what were you going to say? You had a comment?
I think you answered my question right there. I, uh, I, I think before we vote on this, Judith's here. I think we need to let her, before we vote, have, you know, come up and speak, cause she did turn in a blue speaker.
Exactly. I'm going to say, uh, Judith, you want to come up?
Give it three minutes.
This is probably about as close to what we're going to decide as we're going to get.
I appreciate the time.
Judith, you'll state your name and address just for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Judith York, one four two Drayton Island Road, Georgetown, Florida. Thank you. Uh, to go back to this, I've been on the island for over twenty years. A little bit of a history lesson. Started way back when Kinsley came on the island and, and planted his plantations and sold to slaves. Lot of, lot of prominent people from Putnam County even owned property on the island. It was a very viable area in Georgetown. It provided produce and vegetables for the area and serviced Putnam County's towns and little towns. And Drayton Island was very known for its rich lands. So a lot of farming came over and a farm, a farm, one of the farmers had his own barge. Now, as the eighteen hundreds grew and people started making, uh, steam ships, uh, coming down the river. It became a hotel and a lot of tourists came. At the same time, the farmland still went on. Then back in the thirties, as you fast forward, back in the thirties, one of the main farmers made a big deal and he wasn't going to let anybody use his barge anymore. Those citizens approached Putnam County, those, those people who are representing the Board of County Commissioners, please help us. He's going to ban us from using the barge for our properties. Cut, Putnam County, under their own ordinance back in nineteen thirty-two, took it in. There's an ordinance. Putnam County took it in. That is why Putnam County runs and operates the ferry, so that the, a, a landowner can't block anybody from there. That was, you know, and then as you go on, you even see with Fort Gates back in nineteen thirty-nine, the state gave Putnam County the ferry. You're talking about, real quick, with Putnam, with, uh, Fort Gates. Putnam County has a lease with those lands and assigns part of it to a, a real estate deal to operate their ferry. So if you were talking about just the submerged land lease, there's another lease. That's why Putnam County has that property, not only the landing, but the fish camp. You could, you could do whatever you want when that contract's up. And you can take it under your Parks Department and you can make your own money with your own fish camp. But to continue on, back in the sixties, as the, the county grew, there was going to be Pelham Park. There was going to be a big RV center there. There was commerce coming in. Putnam County comes stepping forward with some of the big landowners, the road was given. Part of the landowner helped build an airstrip. I did some two days worth of land, uh, title search. You had Stacy Manning here, everybody you had, other Public Works Director. It's private property, it's private property. Well, then how come in two days of property search, I find twelve documents of showing that we have the Putnam County, uh, that property owner had a lease, had, had given an easement? Well, we can't find the maintenance map. Well, I'll tell you what, guys, give me a week or two, go through your archives, I'll probably find the maintenance map. It's somewhere. It just is, nobody can find it. And going into the minutes, I swear, all of you county commissioners, you do a great job. But I sat all day going through old minutes, all the way back in the fifties, going all the way up through the seventies to find where the arguments came in nineteen sixty about the road, about Pelham Park. And all of this, it was all settled. So you've got former people who have, who have instituted, instituted the ferry landings, not only for Drayton Island, but Fort Gates. You have, you have documentation where they've taken in county roads. Then you have false information being, uh, spread by individuals who don't do their homework. And I think at this point, I am just, after twenty years of fighting over there and giving you two, right, helping to write a grant for two million for both ferry landings. And then still the argument's going on. And the argument for Fort, for, 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 between Fort Gates and Dray, Drayton Island for the grant money. Then we end up giving it back and then we argue that it's got to be for, uh, FDOT to do it. Mike was real good at helping us with all this too. And FDOT says, okay, I tell you what, instead of spending two million on two ferry landings, which it only got two million, because we originally only wanted a wooden dock, just like Fort Gates. And we had requested a push boat that could operate the smaller barge, so that it was all under the county. And then you just hire your own captain. All that went to the wayside because the prior administration didn't know what, left hand didn't know what the right hand's doing. And you end up giving money back. Now FD, FDOT says, I'm spending four million. Mike helped institute, you know, inst, get that all done. And we have an agreement with Fort Ga, with FDOT to operate and maintain that as is. We used to be a six-day-a-week operation. Now we're down to two. Now, we've accepted that. We've accepted two days. We've adapted. You know, we didn't ask for a four million dollar landing, but now the state of Florida's given us four million because we've already established that it's a county road. I don't even know why we're even coming to that, because we couldn't have even gotten two million from the state had we not already proved back then it was a county road. And I'm sorry, Mr. Rawls, whoever's giving you false information, that you keep on thinking that that's the way it is. But this is, this is an institution that has formerly been, been put into. But this is, this is an institution that has formerly been, been put into the county's responsibility back in the 1930s, as is Fort Gates. And I just, here's the history lesson, let's move forward with this. Somewhere else, we figure out how we're going to pay for things, but it is part of Putnam County. And if you embrace your history and move forward, we can take these attributes and make it even a better county than it is. Thank you very much.
Before you say, I'll answer your question. Steph is the answer.
Correct.
We haven't, we haven't had a conversation about this since we had the conversation in the small room when Press Tompkins was Public Works Director. Um, that was the last time we had a, a conversation.
And I, and I argue-
I've said it since the first time I met you down at the meeting in Georgetown, and I, I say it again. I have no problem with you living on an island. I have no problem with anybody living where they want to live. My issue is, is that I don't want to pay $30,000 a year of my tax dollars as a, as a taxpayer, so you can go to your island, and it doesn't benefit anybody except the people that live on the island. Unless you're going to give me a park on the island and give me permission, and on top of that, it's $30,000 on a very limited ferry schedule, on top of that, she gets to charge everybody that goes across, including us. So it, it, it's, it's counterintuitive. What I would prefer is you guys literally float your own boat. So I don't, I don't know, there's a problem with us giving y'all access to the barge, let you hire your captain, let y'all pay it, even if it's taken out with an MSBU through your taxes every year. Then this conversation goes away. Then I don't have, I don't have to go to the other constituents of the county and say, well, there is, there is some money being spent on them, but you can't, you have to live on this, on this dirt road, because we can't take roads into the public work system. And yet, you live on an island, and you got $4 million of state tax dollars. So I personally, we'll have that conversation with them. If you guys be willing to pay your, your part of it, you pay for the ferry operations. We'll pay the ferry operator if we need to go maintain our road.
Okay, yeah, Judith, we're, we're not going to solve this, this has been going on. I appreciate your comments. I will be in touch. I spoke to Lee Douse yesterday, and I said, we need to start, if, I said, I think we can move this forward, which is what I believe we're going to do today. We've got one year, but we need to have those discussions about where we're going after this, after the landings are done, and, and, and the, the future of, of the ferry, okay?
All right, one more comment. Oh, you said somebody said 27 parcels.
When I, when I asked at the meeting in Georgetown, I was told there was 26 houses down there.
Yeah, 27 parcels, there's 138 parcels, there's been a lot of real estate turned over, and people are waiting for the landings to be done, because they're going to build. Now, when they build, it's going to be half a million dollar homes, okay? And that's, that's property tax, that's revenue.
So I was thinking $80 a month, that, that gets cut in by thirds. So now we're talking 30 bucks per, per month, per parcel. It's peanuts, and it, and then you, and then, then, then the landowners over there are literally floating their own boat, and not everybody's having to pay for it.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call. Okay, we got a proper motion to proper second, all in favor, indicate a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. It moves forward. Okay, thank you, Mike. I'll be in touch on that.
Just think that was easy.
Yeah, okay, um, item F, Human Resources Insurance Committee Participation Service Program.
Yeah, can I take this one, or do y'all want to? We went, we went to insurance committee meeting, it's a no-brainer deal, you can get RX. What's the name of it? Julianne RX? RX and Go.
Doesn't cost a thing.
It'll save us costs on the prescriptions if we use them.
If we use.
If we use them, is that correct?
But there's no, there, if we don't use them, it doesn't cost us anything anyway. We have no, there's no downside here to this service.
I make a motion, we go forward with that.
Second.
Okay, we got a proper motion to move item F forward in a proper second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in, and, all in favor, indicate a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign.
Now, Benji, aren't you glad you sat here and watched this all afternoon for that 30-second speech?
That's a no-brainer, you're right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is easy.
Benji, can you stay for the next few items?
Almost 3:47.
Okay, the, all right, I think we have one more small thing to discuss that they brought, made everybody aware of yesterday, so, Mr. Troxel?
This is, this is me again, you guys are going to be tired of hearing from me, but this has to do with the, the Barden Bridge. And I talked with all you guys, uh, last night about this, but, um, we've got, we've got an issue with, uh, some of the drainage pipes that are in front of the bridge, uh, that require a change order. Um, and it's not the change order for the contractor, change orders to, to, for contract inspection services, um, during the time where they, where they finish it. So there, there's two parts to this. The contractor is willing to finish, finish the, the requirements of those, uh, drainage pipes at no cost to the county, um, and then, but the backside of that is, is they want March 15th is the, is the, the date, the final completion. So, um, when we, when we do that, that also incurs a cost on the county on CEI, uh, which is contract inspection. So, uh, that, that cost is roughly $193,000. I think it's 193.5 or something like that.
And?
State of Florida.
Yeah.
State of Florida. No, it's, it's, it's an F dot requirement for, for CEI.
We were going to seek out the state of Florida, see if there's additional funding for that.
Correct, and we have done that, and they can't give us an answer until the end of January, but they're, they're anticipating about 100 grand, um, to reimburse us for, for that. But again, that's, they have to go in front of their board as well, if I'm not mistaken, Mike, right? And then that would lessen the cost down to a little, almost $94,000 for the county. When we think about it, you know, we're getting a $4 million bridge. Uh, I know it hurts that we have to pay a little extra money, but, you know, a $4 million bridge, the county's going to be into about, about a million dollars on our side. That's still 25 cents on a dollar to, to get a new bridge.
Commissioner Rawls?
Tax dollars, they're all tax dollars. It costs $4 million. So I woke up this morning, I decided that we have no way out. You said March 30th is, um, what I, what I would agree with is, if the contractor agrees to a completion date of March the 30th, they pay LDs beyond March the 30th, and they pay CSI beyond March 30th. That take, otherwise, they could string this thing on forever.
You mean March 1st.
I thought you said the 15th.
It's, uh, their date to us was they'd be completely done by March 15th.
Okay, March 15th. We pay CSI to the 15th, they pick up 100% of that and liquidated damages beyond that.
After that date.
And there's no other conversation. I, I would be in favor of that.
Wait a minute, all right, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, sometimes we get into things, and this one we get, we can't get out of. But it was a very good move on this board's position to get DOT to move that money where they did off a Holloway Road over to this bridge, or we would have spent, we wouldn't have had the budget to fix that bridge, period. So as bad as I got that call yesterday, there's sometimes you just have to make the best deal you can to get out of this situation. I think this is the best deal we've got. I agree with Commissioner Rawls that after that drop date, dead of, date of March 15th, it's on them. And ask DOT to, if they, if they can find the money to help us out, I'm good with that. I do what I told you yesterday, I think we do need to let the citizens of Barden know about this as best we can. Maybe, maybe in their community page, put on our Facebook page, that this was the unintended consequences. Um, unfortunately, DOT didn't know the, the, the type of culverts, the pipes. We didn't know the type of pipes. DOT even inspected the pipes to understand that it wasn't the right pipe. So it's not our fault, we just got to tell the story. And the story is, you're getting a good bridge that you're going to be able to traverse over, and you're going to get better pipes, and you're going to get better all the way around. But it's going to take you a few more months to get it done. That's, that's the downside. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner?
Oh, the problem I'm having with this is I think we're being sold a whole load of fertilizer.
That's funny.
Yep, um, number one, I think that the guy can stabilize the size of the roads with a sandbag cheaper than he could have extended the thing and stabilized roads like within his original bid. So when he offers us to come in here and said, well, I'll go ahead and put up sandbags, and I'll do it at no additional cost to you, I'm saying, I hope his heart don't blow out of his chest from his good feelings that he's trying to give us. Um, I, um-
Hey, wait a minute, I need a moment.
You know, this guy owes us serious liquidated damages. I'm talking about serious liquidated damages. So he's basically saying, well, I'll change this engineering over and do the stuff that's cheaper to do, do the stuff that's cheaper to do, as long as, as long as you extend my contract and don't charge me liquidated damages, instead of charging me the big-time liquidated damages that he already owes sitting here today. The, they've known about this since June or July, the contractor has. It went to the engineer. Then the engineer take, like engineers do, they took like two months to redesign or whatever when they figured out that the original assumptions was wrong. So it takes two to three months to figure it out. Then it goes to DOT for their approval for two or three months. Then the contractor comes back and says, well, I got drug out because of that, and, and I don't think he used the reason, but it was probably that he was having trouble getting help managing the job at the level he needed to, to finish on time. We've already set a precedence that we, we don't mind helping out in those situations, but that's not what he asked for here. He basically says, um, I'll, I'll be happy to go in there and do less work than what it originally called for, for the same amount of money, if you forgive all the liquidated damages that I owe. And, yeah, and extend his contract. So, you know, this whole deal sucks to high heaven, guys, it really does. And I don't mind helping out if the guy, if the guy, like, couldn't fun, couldn't get enough men on the job. I've had the same problem, I'm sure Commissioner Rawls has too. In our business, that's just what's going on right now, it's hard to get things done on time. So if that's the issue, then man up and say that's the issue. I wasn't able to man the job like I should have been able to man the job because of, of the industry standard that's going on right now. Um, unfortunately, I don't believe we got much more of a choice than what Commissioner Harvey just came up with a minute ago. It's just I wasn't going to spend that $190,000 without at least bitching a little bit about it. Because I don't think, I don't think that it's right. I think we were, I think we were misused here, and it ain't all on just the contractor. It's on the engineer, there's a little bit of it on Public Works, there's a little bit of it on all the players here that should have come together back when they figured this out and say, hey, guys, we got a little problem. Because back then, it would have been a match. We would have, that project would have been over with. Now it's a raging forest fire, and they're going to, they're going to be into the spring of the year, instead of October, getting two-way traffic on this barred bridge that we paid over $4 million for. You know, all this stuff, it's just all this stuff, it doesn't sit well with me. I'm glad I took my heartburn medicine this morning, I probably wouldn't have been able to breathe right now with this. But, you know, I agree with you, Commissioner Harvey, I don't think we have a lot of choice here, and I think that's what we're going to have to do, is put up the 190 for the CSCEI services. But I'm telling you right now, it don't sit well with this commissioner. And we're going to talk about possible rectifying, rectifying it as part of my commissioner comments today on where we go from here. Because when I found out the CSCEI is charging us $1,700 a day to put one inspector out there on that project, rain or shine, and if he, if it rains and he shows up, he charges $1,700, even though he just turns around, goes home, watches TV, or goes fishing, or does whatever them guys do when they're not working. So my point here is, is that this, this whole situation stinks to high heaven. And we need to do something about it, and we need to fix it where it doesn't happen again in the future. How's that deal? Screw me once, shame on you, screw me twice, shame on me. So it's, it's shaming on me now, so I'm telling you, we need to, we need to try and fix this. And I, I have an option to do this when we get done with this. So I, I, I'm done for now, Mr. Chairman.
I'm, I'm, I'm with you.
I just want to say, was there anything that you and I discussed that wasn't just said in the past? Okay, because I, I thought I was having a deja vu moment, and I, I, I had, I came to the exact same conclusion you did, and we had this exact same conversation yesterday. And I, and I ended it by saying, please tell me I'm the only one that feels this way. So I, I knew that, that, um, this, this board was going to have the, the same heartburn. But I, and I, I agree, I, I, and part of what I asked him was, can we put the, the, is it CEI or CSI?
CEI.
CEI, can we put it out for bids at this point? Because now you have a complete change in scope, and you're, you're, you're not doing the road. You're not doing asphalt-
That's what we're going to talk about in a minute.
Okay, well, you and I are, see, this is one of those rare moments where we're thinking alike.
That's where this is going next. If we could rectify this one, that needs to be part of the conversation, for sure. Could we do an RFQ that get a new, somebody new to come in that we could actually negotiate with for how much they're going to charge a day for inspection services? That's where this conversation is going after we're done with this.
And also, but we're, we're switching scope of work, um, in some ways, and do you really need that CEI? You know, I, I, like I said, I, I really slept on it, and I woke up this morning, my, my question to myself was, you're not doing any more asphalt, the bridge is completed, that's what we discussed yesterday. Now we're talking about the shoulders, so, or the, the, the edges.
It is still an, it is still an FDOT project, and FDOT requires the CEI every day, even on road projects.
What will they be doing?
They want to make sure that they, they, they meet the specifications that the engineer came up with for the compaction requirements, uh, the asphalt that goes in.
Wait, asphalt's already in?
No, 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 they're, 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 they're still got to do the throat, they still got to put asphalt up to the, the throat of the, uh-
Where the real line in the road.
See, when you and I talked yesterday, you said, the bridge will be done, the roads are done, this is just the, the sides.
No, the, the bridge will be done by February something, uh, the, the roads-
None of that was impacted, it was only the sides.
The roads, the road's going up, because the bridge got widened, right?
Right.
So now we got to widen the throats coming up to the bridge. And so part of that is, uh, compacting the ground and getting the stabilized wall there, so they can put the asphalt there. Because there, right now, there's only one lane where these, where these, uh, pipes are at. So the second lane goes where we need to fix that wall, stabilize that shoulder.
Well, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Turner, it, it does, it, it sucks in the worst way. Um, it's, it's $200,000 that I wish we didn't have to spend. I wish we didn't have to tell the people in Barden they have to hang there for another three and a half months when they've already gone three months beyond what they were originally told. Um, I, I don't think it's going to be a tough sell, um, but it just, there's got to be a way for us to keep this from happening going forward. And I, and, and I threw it up yesterday, if this was a design bill job, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We'd be sitting back going, well, it's your design.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
Um, I think we need to go ahead and do this, and we need to craft a motion that will, will furnish the $190 that you're asking for for inspection.
$190,000. $190,000.
Yeah, $190,000, $190,000 that, that you're asking us to come up with. Um, and, but we need to do it, and as part of the deal, we need to ask DOT, because if this is going to be another 30 days before they do this thing, that'll give us time to ask DOT, could we go out for different inspection services? Because I'm tired of this $1,700 a day business, that sticks in my craw, it hurts. So I think we need to, I think we really need to try to do something about it. If DOT won't let us do something about it, ask them, okay, well, we're going to go on and try to get this project done, would you consider the 100 that you're saying maybe we can get later on, or, or there, if, because knowing DOT, they're going to say, no, you already paid for it, so we're not going to do it. That's the way, that's their MO in the past, so, um, what I, you know, I, I think we need to do that today, gentlemen. I think we need to move on with the 190 commitment, a $190,000 commitment, and then try to make sure this doesn't happen again by changes that I'm going to bring up in just a moment.
Hey, I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the project as, as stated, and also with an end date of March 15th, and anything after that, it's on the contractor at that point.
Not to exceed 193,000?
Not to exceed 193, that's what he brought forward earlier today.
Okay, we got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, proper second by Commissioner Turner. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign.
Can I ask a question? Anatomically speaking, what is a crawl?
Why would you go there?
What is a what?
I told you not to go there.
What is a what?
I wasn't able to crawl it.
Crawl, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, is that all the items that we have to move forward today, I think? Okay, so we'll go down to commissioner comments, do you want to start?
I'll start, it's not a problem.
Okay.
I would like to look into redoing the way that we do our RFQs. We're getting cheated, and I know that's a strong word, but we are. The way it works right now, and Julianne, you go ahead and spit it out when I say it wrong, because I know that I'm going to. Basically, we put out our- when I say it wrong, because I know that I'm going to. Basically, we put out RFQ. It goes to a committee, and the committee ranks them on how pretty they think they are. And it's really not much more than that. And so they go in there, and whoever gets number one, they get to pretty much charge whatever they want to charge, with nobody negotiating with them much at all or anything else. I don't know what part of it we can do by statute, because a lot of this is laid out in statute, I believe. Some in ordinance, and some in statute. But spit it out, Julianne. What were you fixing to say?
So, just to clarify, when an RFQ is done, and it is a statutory process, the selection committee identifies criteria within the RFQ related to the project by which we need in order to solicit firms. Then we rank order them. That committee's rank order comes to the board for approval of rank order only. When the board approves rank order, i.e. we did it today on 310, so here's a real life example. We have a rank order now approved by the board. What happens is the board can interject direction at this point, and/or the end user department begins negotiations with that top ranked firm and brings you back a proposal from them inclusive of a fee schedule. At that point, the board can reject...
Yeah, but see, that's the part that's getting us screwed.
Okay.
We need to take the top three that was...
Can't.
Why, why, top two?
In an RFQ, you have to negotiate in rank order.
That's in statute, not in ordinance. So that's why I'm asking for statute here. So why can't we go to the first one? There's no way that we should have had to pay a firm $1,700 a day to send one person there. And if they were there an hour or all day long at $1,700, that ain't fair. And we got to figure out a way around it. I don't know how we could get around it, but we've got to figure out a way around it. It's just not fair. And so I don't know if we can negotiate with the number one for a certain price that we're willing to pay. And if number one won't get there, I know for a fact when we put out RFQ on the land, on the comprehensive plan,
RFP.
we had Kimberly Horn, and we had the other one.
RFP.
Well, let's put out RFP from now on instead of RFQ.
Statutorily, you can't. For an engineer, you can't statutorily for an engineer architect.
One, you can't do proposal for price.
I understand they got good lobbyists and all that kind of stuff. There's got to be a way around this where we don't just hire somebody and, and then say, "Go ahead and..."
Yes, in an RFQ process, you absolutely can begin negotiations with that top ranked firm. And if the board is not satisfactory, satisfied with the fee schedule proposed, we eliminate them and move to the second, second rank. The consequence of that is you cannot go back to your first ranked firm. Once you move on, you begin negotiations with that second ranked firm in, in an attempt to reach a mutually agreeable contract. You can go through as many as you've rank ordered, but you can't go back up or you can't negotiate on a fee basis with all of them at the same time.
Somewhere down the list, if all these negotiations fell apart, could you throw all bids out and start over?
Absolutely. You always can.
Well, that may be not what we need to do. All I know, and it would have been difficult, hindsight's 2020 in this case, because it's very difficult to pick out what we were paying this person before this project started. It was very difficult. But I'm telling you, now that it's come to light and we're looking back, something's wrong here, guys. Something's foul. I'm talking foul. When we're paying an engineer $1,700 a day to send one person to the job, whether he's there five minutes or all day long, five days a week, I'm just telling you, this don't smell good at all. And I, I think we need to figure out a way to do something about this to where, if we can prevent it from happening in the future, we need to do so. If this happened in any of our private businesses, you'd probably be sending the sheriff after us for what happened when we found out about this. And so we can't do that. But we can sure try to make sure that it doesn't happen again in the future. I don't know how. I need help from staff, the procurement experts, to try to get us from where we are to there, because what we got sucks. So we need to figure out how to get there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls, yeah, I'll go ahead and call on you for your comments.
One easy way to do this is to put these out for design build. This puts the onus on the design build team. Situations like this are kind of different because you have an unforeseen condition, but it was, it was disclosed early on the job. But at this point, the design build team would be responsible for all their subservice investigations. And then they're also responsible for providing the third-party inspector. So they're not going to pay them, take the pain of paying $1,700 a day themselves. They'll have this under control because this comes out of their bottom line. I, I think that's part of the problem. You know, and I've shared this with the board before. There was an internal investigation that Ford Department of Transportation did, as well as the federal government with ASHTO. And I shared it with Mike Nimitz, and I believe with Mike Troxell, but I know with definitely Mike Nimitz, where FDOT said that there, there was a value, a huge savings, as much as 30% in time and 30 to 40% in dollars on design build. And this is exactly the type of situation that design build avoids. Because once you engage that design build team, they say, "We're going to charge you $3.5 million to build your bridge." Short of digging up Jimmy Hoffa's body, they're stuck with that. And they pay the differences. You know, this, this is a little bit different situation in that, you know, they were, they were told, I guess, by us, and we were told by DOT that the culverts were, were culverts. And they were expecting to see a certain type of pipe.
They should have went out and looked at them.
I agree. I, I agree. But they didn't have to, because the way we put this out was, we said, "We're going to hire a design team. They're going to design it. Then the contractor takes the design and says, 'I'm going to build it based on your design.'" So I, you're talking to somebody right now that has well over $60 million of design build work underway as we speak. And the way I negotiated with, with the owners were, "Let me do it cost plus." So I don't know if that's possible in government. And I, because of what's happened with COVID, I said, "You win if prices go down. I win if prices go up, but I don't make any more money." But the owner, that I don't have to worry about. And, and we just took a 10% increase on steel stuff, steel costs this past month. But I think the way we do business, especially going forward right now, it, it would be impossible for me to bid a job, firm fixed price, and then stick to it 30 days from now at the rate things are going with petrochemicals, anything. That includes your plastics, your urethanes, piping, anything like that.
Well, I totally agree with what you're saying to some degree. Some jobs are definitely design build. Some of them need to be other. Maybe construction managers even a possibility on certain projects. But they need to be fit to the project. But for right now, that doesn't fix our design services, because a lot of times our, our projects have to be designed before we can ever get money or decide if we can get there. So we can't design build them, because we got to have them designed before we get there.
But you, but you put up for design bid, and they, they...
I'm on your side.
What I'm telling you though is, they tell you, they tell you how much it's going to cost. So you, you'll hear, if you put something out for design build and you get four respondents, you're going to have four prices. It's just a matter of which team you're going to select. But you, you get to see everything. It's all wrapped up in there. If you include the CEI as a condition of their design, design bid, that would, that would price would be included. But I can also tell you, switching hats and going back to the private sector, I don't know how I would feel if I signed a contract with a, with a local or governmental agency of any kind, and they tried to hold me to the terms of that contract in the past six months because of the cost escalations. And I think that we need to be prepared to help out contractors. It's just, you're, you're sending them up for failure. And Terry, you and I both know what cost increases have looked at.
There's going to have to be escalation contracts for pretty much anything we do from here on out.
I haven't verified that...
You're just not going to get anybody, you're not going to get anybody participate.
Right.
That's the real deal. You're just not going to...
But if, if we were doing cost plus, if that's, if that's possible, the other day when I left the office, my office manager said, "By the way, not to ruin your night, lumber index is over $1,000 again." I looked at it three or four weeks ago, it was less than $700. So it, it's, it's really, it's really difficult. You know, in this one case, I, I think we just, we got our butts handed to us. There's nothing we can do about it. But going forward, obviously...
I don't have to like it.
I don't like it.
Exactly. Okay.
I don't like it. No.
Any other comments, Commissioner Rawls?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good. Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Well, I think the easy thing would have been for someone to go out there and verify what the pipes look like. We wouldn't be sitting here today. That's not...
Too late for that.
That's gone.
Back in August.
Yeah, that's gone. But, but we are going to deliver a product to the people in Barden. It's going to be good. And I'm sure that we should lobby DOT as hard as we can, as a board, as our state representative, our senator, to get that extra money if we can. That'll help alleviate some of the pain. Outside of that, I've enjoyed today. I know the audience enjoyed some of it. I watched some of the faces back there in the back on the left-hand side that were laughing hysterically. No, I'm teasing. I do want to wish everybody again Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey.
Yeah, I knew yesterday when I talked to Mike, Mike, and Mike and the staff, that as they went further, it was a rock and a hard place, you know? So let's try to get out of this the best way we can and, and learn from this. So I think...
I figured this discussion might have been a little colorful today.
So anyway, county attorney, any comments? Okay, county administrator?
Just Merry Christmas, Mr. Chairman and Board. Appreciate it. And Merry Christmas to staff.
Okay, yeah. And Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year, healthy. And look for a good 2022. Staff, thank you, each and every one of you, all the employees of Putnam County. We will open this for public comment on miscellaneous items. Anybody wishing to make comment on public items? Miscellaneous, okay. Seeing none? Okay. Judith?
Got to be a miscellaneous item.
I just have a question that's been going on for 20 years.
State your name again.
Judith York, 142 Drayton Island Road, Georgetown, Florida. Port Authority, you have a charter. And under the charter, one of the paragraphs talks about that the Port Authority is in charge of barges and operations, landings, boat ramps, et cetera. Everything along the St. John's River. I'd like to know why Fort Gates and Drayton Island is not under Drayton, under the Port Authority.
Okay, I'll say, we're not obligated to get any discussion on this for items that we were not previously briefed, okay?
That's an open-ended question. I think, I think for the next coming year, as you review a lot of things in your practices, as you have a charter that's been in place for years, and that perhaps it needs to move forward, be under that authority. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
I'll address that. So, yeah, it's, it's really not a charter. The, the state legislature formed the Putnam County Port Authority in 1968, 69, not for waterways, for rails, roads, waterways. It, it's, our boundaries are every square inch of the county limits, and our abilities are almost endless. We have actually more abilities as a port authority than as a county commission. But it, it's not necessarily to operate steamships and vessels, and it actually references steamships in it. I read it again for about the 10th time the other day when I was getting prepared for the meeting this morning. But it, it, I don't know that it would benefit in any way for the county to be operating a ferry service to benefit so few people. I think it would be better for the residents of Drayton Island to operate, to have that operating for themselves and not have the government in your way. You guys, we can collect the fees, the fees through your taxes, through MSBU, and, and pay that to your operator if you also choose, and handle it like, like, like we do in Boswick, where you've got folks that live in the Saratoga Harbor. I'll think of it in a minute. They live on dirt roads, but they want them to be graded. So they tax themselves. They, we, we hire a grading service, they go out there and they grade the roads, and we hear the complaints. But that's them. They have their own, their own committee that meets. They decide how much they want to pay for the service.
But respectfully, the ferry's been operating for over 100 years. The county has operated it for 90 years plus. And, and when I purchased, it was operating six days a week.
But it's not now.
I'm down to two.
Things...
So I'm just saying, all I'm saying is, is your charter. So what you're saying is...
Yeah.
I understand that. But your charter under Port Authority is saying that it falls under that. So I'm just saying, you're, you're having a different idea about an MSBU. Under your own documents, it's stating what you have. And I'm just saying, if that's the case, then publicly, publicly change your charter. Say, kick it out.
It's not actually a charter.
Okay, we're, we're, yeah, we're not, we're not...
It's state statute.
We're not going to finish this today.
It's, it's under there. It's legal.
You brought it. Okay. Public comment? Come forward, please state your name and, and address for the record.
Gary Chrysler.
Gary Chrysler, Train Technologies, 8929 Western Way, Jacksonville. With the procurement group right here, would not having a selection process for certain trades, where you can have continuing contract providers on select, pre-selected, you can get three civil engineers, you could get three architects, you go through a selection process, and then as the job comes up, what you do is you bring three in, they do a little presentation, they bring their project manager, their superintendent. Jeff, I mean, Commissioner Rawls, you can tear them upside one way and down the other, and whoever survives, you can end up ending, negotiating on a scope. Is that...
Call me later, and I'll tell you my thoughts on that.
Okay. Well, to the professionals, we see that...
Direct your question to me, to me.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman. Continuing contract providers are, I see colleges, universities, school districts do it, I would assume.
We, we do have continuing contracts with some services, yes, sir.
Yeah. Does that make it easier?
Sometimes it does.
I don't $1,700 a day.
Nothing makes this one easier.
Yeah, and then sometimes I think if you could send it out to bid, it probably would be, it would be better for us. But, you know, we, we have continuing contracts for a reason. So we have them.
Have a blessed Christmas.
Okay, you too.
Let me ask one more thing before we quit.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Troxell, would you have somebody put together, me, a package of what's gone on since the middle of the year on that Barden Bridge project? I'd like to know how we got here, at what point they found out that the pipes were wrong, how long it took the engineer to do their job, because it seems to me like the screw-up started with the engineer calling for the wrong pipe, because they should have went out and put their eye on it. And it's my understanding that happened back in the summer. I, I'd just like to, I would like somebody to put me together a schedule of events, a... That thing just tastes too bad for me to walk away from it, guys. I can't do it.
I'm with you 100%.
I think we've got to at least know what went on to the point to where we can hopefully prevent it in the future. So if you could have somebody put a, a complete chronological order of what went on on that project for me up to date, I would appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other further business come before this board? We stand adjourned.